Okay, go ahead.
Returning to our regular session, the first thing on our item of agenda would be correspondence and really it's an informational piece. That Kimball. And they're in the position of obviously reinstating regular service which includes the large pickup. So we have scheduled large pickup for June 22. I'm going along with that at this point in time, I think that Becky had had a conversation with. And her name escapes me, the individual that actually handles as far as organizes the garage sale days. At this point in time, she's indicated they still are maintaining just postponement and have no date in mind. They may do something, they may not, but again too, I just thought I'd share that when we decided, we know that there's individuals with especially being a home more. Have had obviously time to clean, so our intent is go ahead, move on with the large pay fish pickup day on June 22. It will be on the water bill, it's going to be on the website and also we'll make certain it's out on the sign as well. So people be aware of that coming up that day. Any other correspondence that anyone else has that needs to be brought before us? If there isn't, we'll move into old business and we have nothing on the agenda, but if you want to provide the opportunity. If any of you have any old business items that you want to bring before us, you're welcome to do that. And if there isn't any, I'm going to move into new business. The first item of new business is under the park opening, obviously the state has made some decisions while the park opening. There was question directed to us from Nate from Smithville Youth Baseball. And we kind of directed him to obviously Matt, who is going to be that liaison or is a liaison for council. And at this point, I'm going to just turn it over to Matt, let him share, you know, what's transpired with council and kind of bring you up to speed. As far as their plans and what we're working towards regards to that.
Thanks, Mayor. So I talked with Nate Butcher, who is, I suppose, the president of Smithville Youth Baseball. And we talked with him regarding their desire to start practice, May 26th. That's next week, next Thursday, I believe. Have a abbreviated season that would run no later than early July. A few caveats with that, there would be. No T-ball, the concession stands would not be open. They would have no tournaments. It would be an eight to 10 game schedule and Nate thought that approximately half of the games might be played at the Village Park. Probably less than half of those eight to 10 games. There's other municipality. Youth baseball organizations that are part of that like Orville. The other games will be played there. They are. They have a waiver that they drafted from. The USS S A national website, it's a National Youth Baseball Association. That was passed on to Mayor Paulson and Tricia and Jason for review. We've been in discussions regarding that. I told Nate that I would bring that to council or at least to. To Jason and Mayor Paulson for review. To get the okay on that. And that's something we can discuss further here or it's up to the mayor. Any questions on on my discussion with Nate?
And again, maybe I would add in, and obviously the emails that Matt has sent and correspondence. Obviously, they're fully aware of as far as the specific requirements that were put out by the state relative to. How they can operate, obviously in a safe mode. They have a plan, they're going to adhere to that lot has to do with distancing, lack of contact, very, very specific information. About obviously having a different ball for each team. And I know that if I understood from the emails, I saw that they also contacted Wayne County Health Department. Relative to opening and basically shared their plans, which the health department indicated that, you know, that they were good to go, that. That sounded like a sound plan. And I know that Jason also had had weighed in and added a obviously a line to the waiver. Which would specifically mention the villages Smithville as well. And again, too, I think if they're open to that, then I think that my mind, I think you covered everything that needs covered. And I think that they would probably be in a position in which to, you know, to move forward as far as, you know, beginning to open and so.
Yeah, as Mayor noted, if anyone is interested on the actual state guidelines on. Conducting baseball softball, at least for the time being. This summer in the state of Ohio, it's found at coronavirus dot ohio.gov. And you look for the the section of the website on baseball and softball. And it gives two columns, a column on on the mandatory things that the state health department is looking for. Compliance on and then there's a column on recommended best practices. And Nate assured me that both he, Phil Baumgartner, as well as the commissioner in Smithville Youth Baseball. That they are fully intending to to follow those mandatory guidelines put out by the state. They had a meeting Sunday afternoon prior to my talking with Nate via phone. To talk with the folks involved with the organization about these guidelines as well. And they wanted me to relay to the council as well that their desire to to hold. Youth baseball this summer isn't just for the kids, but also for the moms and dads that have been stuck at home with the kids as well. And try to bring some normalcy to these kids and the families and the coaches. It sounds to me like they're they're thinking about this wisely and methodically. And they're going to have everything in place before they they start as well, so. One other thing I wanted to bring up with with that ties into, I had a conversation with Mike Turner the other day. About the use of the park for 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 baseball this summer. And as you know, the the restrooms have been closed throughout the winter, they usually are open, I think, late April. And there's a Brennies porta potty down there. So the question is, do we? Have availability for people that come to the games and even during practice to be able to use either the village restrooms. Or continue to just have the porta potty open. Mike and I thought. And the other part was water fountains, water fountains. That's, I mean, people can bring their own drinks to the park, so you know, I'm thinking. Keep the water fountains shut off for now. But. I don't know if if what what council's thinking on. Availability.
Well, I think. My son plays travel baseball and we we're required that we have to take our own water, there's no be no jugs or anything in the. In a dugout and I think all the water on the parks that we're going to be at is going to be turned off, so I would, you know, say.
Yeah, yeah, as far as coaches and players are concerned, the governor's guidelines. Are very clear about separate water containers, no, no team coolers, those sorts of things. You have to bring your own water supply to practice in the game as a player or coach. But I guess the discussion more is for not just players and coaches, but spectators, families that are there, you know. Whether they have access to a water fountain and or the the public restroom, you know, the issue with opening the public restroom is. We we precede, I'm about to say with these guidelines on this website by the state, do not say anything about the use of. Park restrooms or the they call it the venue in terms of the place where practice and games occur. It makes no mention of restrooms, I don't believe. And so. Loud, you know, social distancing is 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 the is the top thing in these mandatory guidelines, the six feet social distancing. In every part of the venue during practicing or games. And if people are going into a restroom. Multiple people at a time, now how do you ensure social distancing? Whereas a porta potty is one person at a time, again, just just throwing out ideas, we're in a different time, right? We have to unfortunately talk about these things.
Well, my my thoughts lean to. Primarily being able to wash your hands after using the restroom and understanding that there there is hand sanitizer in the. Porta john, but that to me, that doesn't take. That's intended for periods where you're where you're not able to use any type of of regular hand washing. I I think soap and water and proper hand washing are are pretty important. I absolutely agree with, you know, bring your own water supply and and maybe it's as simple as we post. On the doors to the restrooms, hey, minimize to one family or or one person per, you know, kind of a. Kind of almost like a like a porta john would be, I mean, of course, you're going to have one person in a porta john, so maybe we say one at a time in the restroom. Of course, and also saying that I don't want anybody from Smithville or or anybody to from from the village to have to try to enforce that. That's that's the only thing that's what we're in the business of doing, but but just giving people the knowledge that. Hey, these restrooms are available, it's so you can wash your hands, but please continue to use social distancing and improper. Best practices. So I guess my vote would be, not that we're voting, but I would lean towards having a restroom available with hand washing ability.
I guess I would tend to agree with Scott, I think that it's impractical not to think that you were going to have to provide some sort of restroom facilities. And I almost in my mind think that the traditional restroom may be more sanitary than a porta john. And especially if we put some postings there on the door within the facility, encouraging specifically those concerns that we would have. And again, too, obviously, I think that we would want to make certain that that we have obviously easy access to, obviously. You know, sanitation type. You know, materials there within the restroom as well, make certain that obviously we have proper soap and things before any event or before any practice. And again, I'm certain that's something if you talk with Mike that he could coordinate and I think. Probably Matt, if you work with Mike, I'm certain they could come up with village hall, some signage to be able to be a host there for the restroom, so.
Yep, I'll do that.
Any other thoughts?
If not, like.
You think maybe we could post the Ohio. Regulations from the governor that that is, you know, just what those rules are. I mean, obviously, it's going to be up to the people to to choose to follow the rules, but we should at least have it it posted. I mean, obviously, a mom with her child is going to go in there, but it's something, you know, that that we have to just. Hope that they follow the rules on, but maybe we could actually from the website post that information from the governor. Sure, you know, maybe that would help, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that Matt, maybe in whatever we posted, you know, on that. We obviously use that as guidance, just as you have thus far, as far as specific information, we want to put available there at the restroom, so.
And I would also agree, no water fountains, do we have a site, we have a sign already that it's closed down there, right?
I think it's turned off.
It's just turned off. Yeah, I I don't think that that should be turned on.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. As far as the state guidance. Within the guidance, it it states that it's the responsibility of the organizers of the youth baseball or softball. To distribute the information and the guidance to all participants, so that would be the players and their families. But, you know, obviously, if if some extended family come to watch a game, they might not be part of that meeting. And so postings would help distribute, you know, that information to the folks that were privy to that earlier, so.
I was I was going to say that without knowing that, Matt, I know no feel better than Nate, but I know Phil's a very good communicator with his organization. So I I had a feeling that he would be telling that to his coaches and players' parents regardless of requirements, so appreciate that.
Any other thoughts?
I'm curious, I can't help it, how, without me reading all these regulations yet. How does a social distancing work during a normal baseball game? In other words, you know, in normal practices, you would see. A catcher, a batter and an umpire within inches of themselves. So what do you do differently there?
Well, as far as in the field of play. They're they're allowing them to make normal. Baseball maneuvers in the field of play. Now, as far as. Face covering, this is what the guidance calls, it doesn't call them masks, it calls them face coverings. So it doesn't have to be a hospital mask, it could be a homemade mask. It's requiring players, when they're not in the field of play, to be wearing face coverings and to have distancing on the bench and the dugout. As well as spectators, spectators can't be within six feet of the backstop, for instance. The defense supplies the ball, the umpires will not be supplying the balls to either team. So ball goes way foul, the defense has to provide another ball from the bench, those sorts of things. In a nutshell. Yeah, it's odd times we're in.
No, not baseball related, are there any discussions about when or if we're going to restore the basketball rims to the court?
I had that question as well, yeah.
Well, thus far, though, if I understood from the governors, there are certain sports that they are allowing, but. What they consider to be contact sport, which obviously, you know, how they determine which is and which isn't. At least my understanding, basketball has not been one that they've indicated, you know, is allowed at this point, so. If I am I correct in that, Matt, from what you've read?
I I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, because again, ironically, some of the things they consider to be contact sport. I saw the list at one point, you know, how they determine that, I'm not quite certain, but I'm not certain the basketball is one that's in there, we could look at that, I guess. My thinking would be once the state allows that to occur, then obviously it would be something that we could, you know, consider going back to as well. But I think until they give us that direction, I think, you know, they were the ones in the same question probably is is out there relative to the playground equipment itself. And yet I've been seeing a directive specifically allowing us to change what they had specifically ordered us to do. I think that's something we can continue to monitor, they seem to be pretty good about posting on their website. Guidance relative to those things that they are opening up, so I think that, you know, my mind, some of those things that we haven't been given a specific. Direction which to open back up probably at this point in time, it probably makes sense for us to continue. Under the cert, under the directive that we've had to this point, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious now, Mayor, that you brought that up. With the. With the baseball leagues potentially restarting. I think it's pretty reasonable to assume that particularly parents of younger children would want their kids to be able to play on the park equipment, so. I I agree that we should follow the state minimum mandates. If that includes. Keeping the park equipment closed, then that's something that that I would think that the baseball leagues would want to encourage that. Again, very difficult to impossible to enforce, but informing and encouraging them to follow the policies would be good.
And again, I guess we could even contact whether it's Wayne County Health Department or. See if we can get a direct answer relative to those other aspects of the park. Just that way we will have covered our bases from the standpoint of if we're asked, I have no problem with us inquiring and trying to, you know, make certain where they're at relative to those other issues as well. Kind of along the same line, the next item that we put on there, and it's because we've been asked. Obviously, we have pavilions at the park that are are there for the purpose of rental. We do have a couple rentals coming up in June, I believe the one that is for a family reunion is late June. But again, all they're asking is is they're wanting kind of to have an idea, so if they need to obviously be canceling or finding an alternative that they're. Looking to consider to use. And again, in that inquiry coming in, it's something I thought I should bring here to this, you know, to us discuss a little. You know, a lot of it, I guess, in my mind is open space, but then on the flip side is probably comes down to. You know, how many people, it seems like one of the things requirements they still have in place is limit on the number of people or participants, you know, involved in. Events that are going on. So again, I guess, you know, I wanted to throw that open to see the one of the events that's on there, we haven't heard directly. And I may reach out and just ask what their thinking is. Generally, one of the reservations is for one of the service organizations that usually have a chicken barbecue. Obviously, food service is allowable, especially on a pickup only basis, and that's traditionally what it's there. Whether or not they're considering moving it, I'm not certain at this point in time. But again, it's one of those considerations, I guess, of other conversation to see what our thinking is relative to. Even that event and conversation with them regarding their plans. I believe if I remember correctly, it's probably the earliest of the two. And I think it's, if I remember what Becky might have said, was it might have been around the 20th or somewhere in that timeframe, so. Any thoughts?
I I think to late June, one would be pretty. Pretty much past anything, I know I've been. Working from home like a lot of people and my employers, Ohio based, and they're planning on. Unless there's cases where there's hardship that just about everybody will be back to normal operations by mid to late June. As far as returning into offices and places like that.
Tom, I just want to weigh in from a legal perspective. I know the governor released some additional things today. I still have not seen an actual press release order guideline, whatever you want to call it. But it's my understanding, one of the things that is still going to be in place is gatherings of 10 people or more. Are not going to be allowed. So while I know he's rolling back some things, I believe he made that fairly clear today that that was going to remain in place. So I think that's a big issue from a pavilion rental standpoint.
Sure. And again, too, obviously, you know, the thing that makes it hard for us is the fact that. They tend not to really give much, you know, overall long range thinking until the point that they get to it. And even though this is over a month away, you know, it's kind of one of those things that by then, you know, will he someday, you know, the first of June, the 10th of June, say, hey. We're going to allow groups larger, you know, without them giving us any indication of kind of overall thought process. It really makes it difficult because, you know, people do need to know ahead of time and are trying to make some sort of, you know, plans. You know, and I think these questions, we're only just trying to be responsible and and be able to communicate to the folks that are probably going to be traveling and. Making plans in which to come for a reunion, so. Again, and I know that's probably the biggest thing I told Becky, that I think the issue is at this point, you know, from what I understand is 10 or less, so. It really makes it difficult to see how, you know, you can allow that to happen, so. But I was just, you know, asking for input in regards to what, at this point, should we, you know, communicate to these folks? One of the things I thought going forward, and I didn't say this to you earlier, Jason. But my thinking was if we were to appoint that the numbers would allow us to have that, whether or not it still made sense, maybe we generally have them sign an agreement. But developing a a waiver again, just informing them of social distancing and the kinds of rules we'd like them to adhere to. On top of the normal agreement that they signed for us, that way then the individual that's renting it, you know, has been informed by us and it's us taking the extra step. Of communicating to them as far as what we would would expect as far as how they. If they were to have that gathering minimized, you know, as far as risk within that party. So I don't know what your thoughts would be, but and again, if you want to think about it, you know, that was one of the things I thought maybe we should consider as well.
My my gut response is I think that's great. Any additional steps we can do to show we're informing people, we're telling people, this is how it needs to be. I I don't think that hurts us in any manner.
Sure, all right, well, maybe what we should do is, and I guess I would jump back to Matt. I'm glad you're on board and have the park, maybe what we should do is kind of come up with something ourselves as far as a draft of. Information that we might want to have in that, and obviously if we get a draft to Jason, I'm certain, then he could review and fine tune it. From a legal standpoint, but if we at least put together something as far as type of information, I think would make sense too, so.
So when people sign up for a pavilion now, is there some sort of waiver?
Well, yes, there is, and what I'll do is have Becky make certain you get a copy of that, but really the purpose of that has to do with the use of the facility. Some ground rules relative to it and how they have to leave it, particularly from the standpoint of obviously pay a fee. And I believe there's also a deposit and there's some things there relative to obviously the responsibility. As a leasing or renter of that space, I mean, that specifically, there's nothing in regards to this type of, you know, situation. So I think that's why I was thinking it makes sense to contact those individuals and ask them to sign something that would kind of cover this specifically. From a standpoint of communication purposes, as far as our expectation, so.
Yeah.
And we can talk further about that, obviously, in a few questions, we can kind of put our heads together. A draft is something that we can have Jason look at then too, so. And I know just on the whole opening of as far as baseball, one of the things that I shared with Matt is I think that not only. Number one is obviously that we make certain that the the safety of the participants have been considered, but then secondarily. That we also have any answers for those folks in the community as they see these things happening. That we can say to them, these are the things we've done, these are the steps we've taken to show that we've also been responsible in opening these things back up. And so and again, I think that's part of what's important about you folks, at least having this conversation tonight. So if questions are directed to you, obviously, you have a a general sense of it wasn't just something that just happened. There was thought given to it, a lot of planning into as far as and being in compliance with what the state has indicated, so. Like I said, are there any other questions regarding that topic specifically?
I guess I I have one question or comment, how are I I guess it's a major question, how are we going to rent our pavilion? At this point, when we know that the 10 or less people is not opened up at this point.
Well, I guess.
I'm sorry, but to me, that sounds like right now you can't open them.
Yeah, and I would agree with what Jason has said, as long as it's 10 or less, obviously, we we can't do that.
Right.
You know, the challenge for me is, I guess, at this point, tell them that, but you know, lo and behold, it's the 10th of June, he opens it up, you know. It would have been nice to have been able to, you know. It would have been nice to have been able to, you know, have that information or have an indication what they're thinking, as long as things continue to, to, you know, follow the lines they want, but. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, so I think it's best point to communication we have is that know, you know, as long as the guidance is that ten or less, then no, they cannot use the, the pavilion for their.
Right, unfortunately, we don't have the governor's schedule, so.
No, I know, so we can only work with what we have at this point.
Correct. Okay, thanks for calling it out.
Sure, not a problem, any other questions? If there isn't, then like I say, and, and we'll go ahead and work on some things when we get to that point. Um, that we'd be in a position in which to, um, implement some of that communication too, so. Um, is there any other new business that should be brought before you, us? Here's one other thing I'm gonna share, but is there anything from council that they have, they wanna bring before us, and as far as new business items? If not, um, the other thing that I, um, alluded to when the chief was with us, was that my plan is that as of first of June. Um, and Mike already with Adam had approached me and asked about, uh, as far as my feelings about them starting to work. Um, both of them, you know, we'd had them working opposite shift times as far as taking days off. Um, I told him I had no issue with that at this point, particularly from the standpoint, the reason he was asking that has to do with obviously the workload relative to mowing. And obviously, the mowing and that really is something to do independent. Um, so again, I, you know, again, cautioned him, I think the concern that we would have is that, you know, they limit exposure to each other. Um, but you know, as far as both of them beginning to restore, both of them working together or working at the same time as far as shift-wise. Um, I think it, from a practical standpoint, it makes sense. Um, so again, that was a directive, and talking with Becky the other day, um, I think that the intention would be also for. Um, Beverly and her both restored to their normal work schedule as of the first of, um, June, which works well relative to obviously. Um, paid periods, but also works well relative to Memorial Day, it'd be after that week of Memorial Day weekend. So they'll start working again, I think they'll be conscientious as far as, you know, their desks allow spacing as it is. And again, I think that they will be conscious as far as how they interact in that regard. On the other side of the, of the question, um, I guess, when it comes to probably the biggest exposure. That they would have is at the point that we open Village Hall back up. I guess my feeling has been, we have found it not really to be a great hindrance, majority of business, uh, has continued. We have not really received complaints, I think most have found it, you know, in other words, acceptable to conduct business through the drop box. Obviously, they have made exceptions, um, on occasion, whenever there was something specific, meaning. Um, if a contractor that has a, you know, obviously, a contract that they need to sign, we've allowed those individuals in or. Other things of that nature, I know someone is here to see the police, they call the police and the police have let someone in, so. I think from the standpoint of operationally, um, I think, you know, it has worked, we have not had complaints, so. With that in mind, I think to open up and, you know, allow a lot of access into the building itself. Only raises of as far as the need for us to sanitize a lot more, to ensure that the, you know, obviously, the interior of the facility is maintained for those that are working here. Um, so my feeling is that I may, you know, a- and I was open to suggestions. My thinking is, as long as it isn't an impediment upon people's ability to do business with us. I think that again, that's one area that would may make sense to continue and reevaluate, you know, later in June. As far as whether or not we, you know, at that point in time, wanna open up totally, um, to the public again, so. But again, I thought I'd share that, um, what my thinking is, and, and take any thoughts or input that you may have.
I agree, I, I like to keep it closed off to the public as long as it's functioning okay like that, and wait a while and see what happens.
Yes, I agree.
Any other thoughts? Well, if there, if there aren't any other thoughts, otherwise, then that will be my plan. Um, and obviously, at any point that if any of you have questions or have questions directed to you, be welcome to. Um, communicate those to myself as well. Um, but at this point, that's what we're gonna plan on doing, um, so we'll begin to, you know, restore back to, um, normal functioning, but at this point, leaving the village hall. Um, closed to the public, so. Anything else as far as new business that people might have? If not, then I will, uh, move into our reports, and we have anything from Scott for equipment?
Nope, I talked to Mr. Turner today and there was nothing.
Yeah, um, Larry, do you have anything for fire?
Oh, we had a very short meeting on May seventh up at Station Two, and we. Social distance with masks, everything's really calm up there, their calls are actually down, which they attribute to a whole lot less people being on the road. So that's about it.
Okay. Um, Rob, do you have anything, I, I think maybe you have further information about the memorial activities, Memorial Day?
Yeah, we're, they're gonna go ahead and go through with that, and they're gonna have a social distancing, and, um, they're gonna do a short ceremony, and I, as I sent the. Attenorate to everyone earlier today, um, don't really foresee that, Dana don't foresee it. Happening, you know, going any longer than thirty, thirty-five minutes, and so, we're hoping to get, get it done then, and just bear. Respect to those that have, that have fallen, and then, um, be on our way, so.
And again, that's something I think Beverly, that he did send an email and asked if we could maybe post that on our website as well.
It's there.
Yep, okay, thank you, because again, there's some people that have called and asked what the plans were for that day, so. Right, um, moving on then, um. We've talked park, the park, but Matt, do you have anything else you wanna share at this point?
Yeah, a few quick things, uh, Mike Turner let me know that Rogue Tree Solutions did take down the two trees along North Summit, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, the stumps will be ground hopefully this Thursday, weather permitting. Also, Mike stated that, uh, dirt for the infields in the village park should be coming later this week. And finally, uh, last few days, I've determined that for the Parks Committee, there are two openings. Um, that we need to fill. Nate Butcher is still on, and, uh, I received ca- a call back this afternoon from Chris Sarris, who's willing to continue to be on the Parks Committee. So we, we, uh, we've typically had four, um, folks from the community. So we, we'll, we'll need to find two, I have a few, um. Ideas as far as folks, but if anybody else on council, um, this meeting has any suggestions, please, uh, send them to me via my, uh. Council mail, we'll consider that.
All right, sounds good, yeah, and once you, um, find those individuals, um, and they've agreed to, if you just wanna bring them to a future meeting. I mean, as far as bringing their names, they wouldn't have to come, I mean, they'd be welcome to, if we're meeting in person. Uh, but again, to be something if you just had put on the agenda, we'll approve those individuals to that committee, so.
Very good, at some point this summer, have a, a Parks Committee meeting. Um, possibly, since it would be a small meeting, under ten, we could have it in the pavilion. In, in the summertime, possibly, so.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, moving on then, streets and sidewalks, John?
Uh, I just have one thing, that's, uh, the flowers have been placed downtown, and it's, they look nice, that's it.
All right. Um, and then I guess the last thing is finance, personnel, Tricia, anything? Tricia fall asleep up there? All right, um, the only thing I would share is that, a couple things. Um, usual things that happen, we did contact as far as the spraying service. And they will be coming in, weather permitting, and spraying, um, the village for mosquitoes. Um, again, that's something we traditionally do about this time of year, uh, may not many, as many uses, but particularly with park, you know, being used more. Um, so they will be coming, and also, I do believe that, uh, um, street sweeper had indicated they were gonna come in as well. Um, so again, we just did that from Memorial Day parade, we don't have that, but, um, again, too, obviously, we're still gonna do that. Um, and I think those are the only things that, that I would have as far as informational purposes. Um, and looking down through our agenda, uh, the only other thing would be, um, obviously, we have some bills that. Should have a copy of the one set or bills that needed to be paid prior to this meeting, which have been paid. Then there's also a list of bills, um, that are being approved that will be paid. Um, if you've had the opportunity to review those, um, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve the bills as presented.
Motion to approve the bills in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second, um, prove the bills as presented, any questions? Hearing done, roll call?
Sir?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Thorn?
Yes.
Alan?
Yeah.
Haas?
Yes.
Hi, Chair.
Yes.
Um, just a couple pieces of information, um, from BPA side of things. Number one is Ohio Drilling has been in, and they did evaluate and test the two wells at the water plant. Um, today, there were some emails to those individuals relative to, um, as far as the results of those tests. Um, one thing I may do, um, is, and if anybody else is interested in seeing them, they'd be welcome to, um, I'd be glad to send them to you. Um, but I'm gonna send them to you, particularly Scott, I know that you'd asked some of the questions relative as it related to the new water tower. Um, and be quite honest, and me reading the, what the results and communications were, um, I might need an interpreter in which to. Um, you know, kind of put in layman's terms as to, you know, exactly what they're speaking about. Um, but I know there was correspondence between the engineers and also Ohio Drilling, um, so I'm gonna forward those to you. Um, and I guess I would welcome your input back to me, um, relative to your thoughts. Um, and I know that they're still waiting to do the two wellfields out at Wildersville, simply because how wet it is. Um, they have equipment, they need to take in, they're unable to access that area, but as soon as they can, they're gonna do that. Um, I know that also two pro tech has been in and is working on the communications piece between. Um, the wellfield, the water tower, the water treatment plant, current, um, to upgrade and to correct problems and the issues we have, insisting with that. Um, and I think, you know, the one thing I, I think I mentioned to you prior, um, but I can't always remember, it was BPA or here. That, um, our CT consultants have actually offered to us simply because their workload is lessened to the degree that it has. They were given a box of old documents, particularly blue, blueprints, um, different bid documents of old projects. And they're going to, for free, for the village, basically to keep their staff, um, utilized and using their, obviously, times they're paying them for. They're gonna convert it all to digital form, so that way that we will have all our older documents, I mean, digital form. Which will be nice from the standpoint of our digitalization of our, um, utilities and our cap program. That allows to attach those documents as PDFs, um, so that way, going forward, if you want to look at when something was done. What was done and the specifics of it won't be a matter of digging through documents, you'll be able to access it digitally. Um, so they're doing that free of cost, um, obviously, we took them up on the offer and Becky went through and provided them those documents to them, so. Um, and BPA has continued to work on the issue as far as I and I as well, um, so they're having quite a few things they're working on, so. And I think that's it, and I guess, uh, just a note that our next council meeting is June the second, seven PM. Um, and maybe I'll let you know, I guess, you know, I was considering, if we think that we can space within the facility here. Um, of doing that, so we can get back together, uh, but I'll let you know, sure, for sure, prior to that date. Um, and then BPA has a meeting work session June eighth, and given that they're a small group, they will be meeting here at Village Hall again. Because by all means, we'll be able to accommodate spacing for them to meet in person, so. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
In a second. Okay, we have motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Great, well, thank you, everybody, appreciate it, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night, all.
Night, all.